Going to open the Wilkes-Lowndes Board Meeting, March 2nd, 2022. All the meetings of order, first order of business. After town meeting is always the organizational meeting of the select board. So we need to elect a chair for the ensuing year.
I'll nominate Linda Martin for chair. I'll second that.
So do we have any other nominations? That position? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We need nomination for the vice chair.
I'll nominate Kirk Klein for vice chair of the select board.
We have a second for that?
I'll second.
Do you have any other nominations for that position on the board? Hearing none. All in favor of Kirk Klein as vice chair for the suing year? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Election of a clerk. This is just in case you need to stop, sometimes forms require the clerk or secretary, but doesn't mean you take minutes. Or anything. So take nominations for a clerk.
I'll nominate Deb Klein.
That has to be a board member.
What's that?
Has to be a board member.
Board member, yeah.
Like I said, they don't, they don't actually take any minutes or anything. Occasionally, in some of the forms, they ask for the secretary. Or clerk to sign, so in case that comes up.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, sorry.
So.
I'd be happy to take my mask off.
So I'll nominate Richard Lee. If you accept it.
It would be if we needed a paper.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for clerk? If not, all in favor? Aye. So carry. So we have the. Next item is adopt the rules of procedure that we need to do each year. These are the ones I believe that we adopted last year as a board. Well, no, I didn't see anything that I wanted to change or felt needed to be changed or updated. Does anyone else have any? Suggestions? Or do you feel like you need to wait another meeting? We've already adopted them last year.
I read them on my email just before I came here, so I don't see anything.
Okay, so we can take a. Motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the select board rules of procedure. As stated from last year.
You have a second?
I'll second then.
Any further discussion on those? All in favor then?
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. I will. Could not find a signed copy. So I will sign this and. Pass it around and we will give it to Kirk to put on the website. Set date and time of regularly scheduled meeting. You all happy with when this first and third Wednesdays at 6:00?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we really need a motion for that if we're all in agreement that that will be. Our regularly scheduled meeting time. Designation of newspaper of notices.
News and Citizen. I think that's the best distribution.
It does. I'm actually quite worried about them. I still haven't got my paper from last week. Tom is very concerned too, because when you have to give out notices within 15 days. But I, I thought a lot about it and I can't think of any other alternative at this point. I guess if we have it on the website. Not that everyone looks at it, but.
Yeah, I, I, because the Gazette is not very healthy either.
No, and that's online, but then they're going to only publish it possibly once a month in the future, so.
And Doc has come up with a new online thing he's doing. And he wants to know if we wanted to participate. I told him I would have to see it first.
Is this something different than the Gazette?
Yes.
I wondered why we hadn't heard from him in a while.
Something he's doing himself. I don't know if he knew anything about it. I'll send you his email.
So. Are we happy with designated news and citizen as our paper to post notices for meetings that were required to?
You have really an option.
I don't think we do.
Does the Burlington Free Press even come to this area anymore?
Just the stores. I think Bryce Harper does it still.
I haven't bought a new Burlington Free Press in probably three, four years.
Yeah, it's above 50.
Yeah. Most people are going to online. And I thought about the Stowe reporter too, but I don't know. We'll, we'll just stick with the News and Citizen. Is that all right? News and Citizen will be our designated newspaper. Set mileage rate for. Ensuing year, someone asked me about this and I said if you would set it. The organizational meeting, we presently pay 51 cents a mile. We just looked it up and it's 58.6 the IRS. So it's something what the board thinks they want to.
Is the state 55?
Nope. Can you hear me with my mask?
It was difficult, yeah.
So. We presently pay 51 cents a mile.
Yeah.
We just Googled it and IRS pays 58.56. Same as the state. So I'm not sure how the board feels, where they want to fall in there, in between those two.
So the state and federal is 58.5.
And we presently pay 51.
Same maybe 55 cents. Would we?
Mm-hmm.
Where?
That sounds good, 55.
Do we need a motion on that or we can just?
We just got the rate 55 cents per mile.
Okay, Kirk.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. So carry. Other amendments to the agenda.
I might request executive session at the end personnel.
I have two. One, I got a call at 5 o'clock tonight about an overweight permit. Just the weight limits for some work they're doing in town. And the other one is. Codes and standards. And I'll talk about it when we get there. We can either deal with it or next meeting. Okay. Approve the minutes of February 16th and the informational meeting of February 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve. Both of those meetings are minutes.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussions, corrections, deletions? Things that were forgotten? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Comments on the community?
Is there anything?
You have to double check. Has the correct address?
It is correct.
Close it correctly? Now it's getting more run.
Maybe they're all with Bernie.
Maybe.
Bernie's having a town hall.
Right?
Right now.
If not, we'll move on to. Well, why don't we take up the overweight permit? So I had a call from JP Secar. A call from JP Secar. They are working on the rail trail right now. Cutting brush and getting ready. For the spring to do concrete work and then they're going to be doing bridge work. So they did fill out an overweight permit, which we have. The maximum weight that the board approved. A number of years ago and he's saying that. His equipment is over these weights and he was asking how we could work through this. So he. Could move his equipment around. He has won 427,000 and our limit was 99,000. The other one was 149,900. And we have 99 and that's pretty much based on axles. So I said I would bring it up. He says he sent it out to, I asked him what other towns were doing. He sent it out to 20 different towns. He tries to be respectful and do the overweight when he's in there. Only two of them, he said, problems with us being one of them. And he understands, you know, at mud season or something, if he has to go on the town road, he would. Call the road crew to make sure that. The road was frozen. He doesn't anticipate really being on our roads too much because he's going to be going up and down. The rail trail, but at some point he will be lugging his equipment, so.
One piece of his equipment's already here.
Right. So I wondered how, what, if the board would approve these weights for a higher, higher.
Do you know what road he'll be using? Is it just?
You know, you'll have to use the fly iron.
Yeah.
Because of the width.
Well, can you go through that bridge?
This one here?
By the garage?
I don't know.
So. How did he get, get it here?
I don't know.
The, the.
Did he?
The unit he has right now is just cutting the brush.
Right.
Which is not very big.
No.
But what he has is a large drop. That he's going to be using to dig.
Right.
And that's the big problem right now.
Because he's going to be building the bridges. Come spring or summer.
I mean, the one down by MacArthur's. I think he's going to have to have one at each end and that's where it's going to be the trouble. If he was to place the bigger one down on the Mooresville side. And have a smaller one on this side, the Wilken side. Might be able to do it, but.
He has a big one here.
He has a bigger one, yeah.
Oh, he does? Okay.
Yeah, he's just cutting the brush, but.
He's, he's still up by Fisher. It's like I said, I, I think the one he's got here is not a problem, but the bigger one, I think he'd have to play, play something more.
Well, the question is, I mean, he's going to make up his mind. He's coming from Barton. You know, are we going to not let him on our roads? That's the question.
I think it's also in coordination with the road crew.
Then yes. I mean, if he does it before the end of March, who will get here? It's going to be the question after the end of March.
Yeah, he, in, in talking with him, he was very. You know, on the, of, of mud season and our roads and respecting them and so forth, but. He needs to be able to have a permit to get onto the rail trail with his equipment.
That's why I had to call Linda, because I only have the, I can only go up to work the slippers without having.
Right.
Yeah, so I think I, I think we should. Allow this, yes.
I would allow as long as the town crew formans are.
So we, on the permit, we, on the permit. So first of all. We can put that on the map.
That's what I was.
So.
I would have the letters as long as.
Is that good with you?
But.
So we'll, we'll, for the minute, Steph, we'll approve his overweight request. And we're, direct the town clerk to put on the permit that he needs to. Stay in touch with the road foreman. During mud season or.
Yeah, he wanted to talk to Dylan today, but he already left.
Appointment of the solid waste supervisor. Phil, Phil Wilson is presently the supervisor. He's willing to stay on. He said he needed this appointment by April. He's also willing to come to the board and update us on what's going on if. The board wanted him to.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be great.
What's his name again?
Phil Wilson.
Phil Wilson.
Because the, the, the letter committee. Andy Duff. Wants to do a cleanup on Riverbend. And he got a $500 grant from Waste District. So it's good, and it's really good to keep up with these guys.
We might have a pretty big meeting next meeting, but maybe April, the April 1st meeting, Dev, we could. Schedule him to come in and talk. To update us on what's going on. So do we have a motion to. Reappoint Phil Wilson from the office of Board of Supervisors for Solid Waste Management District?
I'll make that motion to. Reappoint Phil Wilson from the full stretch of the solid waste district. Most likely.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Wilkes-Loon liquor license. They have a liquor license and a tobacco license they're applying for. Boilerplate.
No violations.
Well, they wouldn't show up on here.
No, I talked to Jamie Green. Everything's good.
If they don't have those licenses. They go out of business.
Pretty much.
Do you want to look at it?
I'm trying.
I'm trying with it. So then we have a motion to approve the Wilkes-Loon liquor and tobacco licenses.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed. So carry. There's two places you need to sign on there, Kirk.
Kirk, I just wanted to.
Transfer station attendant.
I want to move that to the executive.
Okay. Codes and standards. I talked to Dylan about our codes and standards. I was a little confused. Actually, I took a webinar. I was confused on whether we had to. Re-adopt the whole big packet of roads and standards. Which was dated June 5th, 2019 and, no, all we need to do is fill out this first page, certificate of compliance. We've already approved. The actual body of the standards. This has to be submitted before we can apply for any grants. So I thought instead of waiting any further, that we should just. Approve, sign this and get it in. So when our grants are submitted that they. It's there.
Yeah.
So is that all right with the board? I'll pass that around to.
Yes.
Sign.
Um, it's on the bottom to the right of where they sign is where you, this select board sign.
Oh, okay. You go ahead and. Post office.
Yeah, I think there's three places actually for you guys to sign. Maybe it's under what says approved. You see approved and then underneath is where you sign.
There you go. Project manager position. I made a packet for all of you. I'll give you a little. Background, we advertised in the News and Citizen from the project manager for two weeks in January. Didn't hear anything. Then we advertised in the VLCT website, January through March. It's just ending now. And we did. So we have three. Applicants in your packet. And also a copy of the job description. I don't know how you want to handle this. Do you want to go through and look at the job description first to see if. You feel comfortable with this because it's not the select board assistant or town. Man, not manager, well administrator position. It's. We talked about changing it a little, so. You're just getting to look at this now, this job description? Do you want to fill up, do you feel like you need to review it, review it as a group?
We're going to wait until we sign.
Okay. Do you want me to start over? So we have this job description for the project manager. I want to know how the board wants to handle it in terms of review. Do you want to take time and review it as a group or do you want to take time and come back next week? Approve it? You don't care? Okay? Richard and Alan? Fox? On, on the job description?
What's good, Nate?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we have three applicants in our packet who we will need to interview. Which we won't do tonight, but I thought you could look at them and review them. I didn't know, maybe next meeting you wanted to come in. Early for the meeting at 5:30 and maybe. Start interviewing these people that have applied. Unless you have another option, I mean, another night.
Is that? Two weeks out.
Well, we could have, well, we can't have a meeting next Wednesday because we have the school house. We can't interview them now unless you want to have another meeting at another time. What would the board like to do?
So it wouldn't be until April, we just look at these.
I'm hoping March 16th, we could. Interview these people and. We could have an executive session at the end of the meeting if we felt like we had a candidate and.
Here's a chance to study the applications.
Well, you need to, yeah, and studying them in terms of looking at, like, we look, look at the job description and. Make sure, you know, all the things that. We're looking for. In their resumes and so forth, in terms of experience and so forth. One of them actually is a, a company. Seem Solutions. Has a lot of strength in. Both of them have more strength, it looks like, in highway type management, but. That one doesn't really have any in. In-house paperwork or so forth, where the project manager will actually assist the board with. Files and records and so forth, calling up on correspondence, that type of thing. So when you, when you're looking through them. Review the job description. Do you have any questions now?
I guess the only question I have is, I see Kurt's line was. Interim. We'd treat that separately, wouldn't we?
No, I wouldn't think so. Interim just means until we can find someone really acceptable.
Yeah.
Because we're getting desperate and we're getting exhausted. You know, I'm not sure if these two candidates, it doesn't mean we just, we need to take them just because they applied. So it would be interim would mean, it sounds like from this letter, until we can find someone at some point to take over. But right now we need to get a lot of this. A lot of things like log in and order projects in order, find out where we are now.
Yeah, I think one of the thoughts behind the interim is that there's not a lot of structure right now in, in terms of process and so forth. And so I think it's important that we continue to try to find a full-time or a full, full part-time project manager, but it might take some time to do that. And if you're not familiar with town and some of the, you know, the ins and the outs of the operation of the town, it's going to be, it could be very difficult. We, we learned a bit of that with random. Kind of threw Randall into the pot and said, go do it. And I don't think that that was fair. I don't think that a candidate would necessarily be successful if there is not a structure in place, right? If you look at the job description, it's, it's extensive. Yeah. And if you're not familiar with all of the projects and, and all of the, you know, all of the personalities and so forth, it'd be very, very tough.
Now, I guess that's primarily why I thought we might treat your, your application differently. I don't want to get us out on thin ice somewhere. Your reasoning is very sound on that. You have to build a structure that they can come in and deal with.
I just think it's only fair that we interview them long.
Well, I understand that, yes.
Yeah.
Kurt's applying for an interim. To build a structure for that person, that's that's why I we have to interview everybody, but I.
So you can make up your mind next, you can make up your mind next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I just wanted to follow the process thoroughly.
Yeah, I understand that.
I think two weeks. Unless you want to meet, meet next week sometime. Up to you.
So I just have a question. If one of you is applying for the job, then that means you won't make the decision. That person will not be making the decision who is it?
You mean if someone on the board is applying, can that person vote for themselves?
Can they even be involved in the decision?
Well, they won't. They'll just be interviewed.
Do we use?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no.
Recuse yourself of this.
Yeah, I think that's adequate.
So that person wouldn't be in with the other interviews?
Well, we, they won't all be together anyway. I'm going to invite them, the other people to come and zoom if they want to zoom or in person and they will each be individually like we did the cleaner.
Right, but he can't sit in on their interviews. If he's applying.
He could sit there, but he can't say anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm applying to try to advance this. Because if it doesn't advance, the things are just going to go to hell.
You mean like, let's do a police chief and the police chief, please. If one of the officers below the police chief until you find your actual police chief.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, make a problem.
No, but I just think you have to recuse yourself of the whole process. If you're applying.
I will decide that one.
I will.
I just think you might want to talk to modeling the cities of town and see what they.
We have quite extensively, we have backgrounds from them too, on whether this is possible.
Yeah. My first question was, you know, this is even possible being on the select board and so VLCT, the legal department. We haven't written here.
Okay, so we will. I will reach out.
5:30 work, all right.
Yeah. I'll be getting home by then.
I'll reach out and see if we can get the applicants in 15 minute slots. Well, I think 10 minutes is enough.
I'd go 15.
15. Well, then we might have to start at 5:15.
That's coming too close to you.
No.
I'll just start early.
I think I can get it early, I'm sure.
Just a suggestion on the woman from SEAM, as Linda had mentioned, that she's actually a consultant. And so she's looking for a consulting gig here. And I wonder if it doesn't make sense for one of you to have a phone interview first just to see if it's within, you know, is this within our scope financially? Because given the background, I mean, I hate that bringing somebody all the way in from Barry, you know, they're, they're going to want to quote it at $80,000 or something, you know, because our ad does not specify what, what the rate would be. And just to see if way so far out that you don't want to waste everybody's time on that.
She is, yeah, very, I couldn't even, couldn't tell. Is she actually an engineer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, she's got incredible resume.
I know.
Incredible resume.
It's way over what we're really looking for, you know, maybe someone in, maybe Burlington. But it's not really something that we could. All right, I will give her a call.
She sounds really interesting. She might be a great resource.
Right. I have talked to Bob McGee a little bit. I didn't really, I didn't really interview him. I just wanted to be clear on what he was applying for because his letter didn't really spell it out. And I wasn't sure if it was just a application, a general application because his resume is dated January 11, 22 in his letter. So I wasn't sure. But he is applying for it. He saw it on the VLTC website. His strength is mostly in transportation, maintenance of vehicles. He has been a select board member, but okay, I will call. One, see if I can set up some interviews. I'll reach out to you if that's not possible so we can decide what to do as an alternative.
And those will be March 16th? 5:15?
So I just want to have a discussion, a quick discussion on the town meeting ballot. Everyone know the results? No? Everything passed. I don't have in front of me the totals.
Which one would you like?
Well, I know what they are, but if, I think, Kurt, if you want to have, get a copy from Belinda ten after. One of the ones is the library, the cemetery commissioners for five years. State law says that we need to advertise, post that vacancy within 10 days. If I wrote something up, would you put that on the website?
Sure.
And then I'll send it to Belinda to put on our board. We'll have to have some discussion about Article 4.
That was surprising.
The cannabis retail in town. I didn't really pay too much attention to it, but I guess we might need to reach out to Healthy La Mola and find out what the next step is in terms of the board, unless you know.
Well, there's, it's the whole issue is a long, long way from being done. I mean, legislators haven't even completed their.
Well, October.
It's going to be open yet.
In October.
Is that, and then it's October where they will start to issue licenses.
Right.
I was, I was surprised. They didn't, I guess 24 towns had this on the ballot. And the vast majority approved it, which surprised me. Personally, I voted no on this because I just think it's, it's a burden on us, the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it requires you know, ordinances and bylaws and all kinds of things, but.
Cannabis control board.
Cannabis control board, yeah. But the voters voted it in, so it's going to be another, another project.
I'm a little surprised if you get that.
Well, I'll tell you, I had a conversation with someone today who voted for it. And it's because they thought we would get revenue.
That's what people, yeah.
And I think that's what they thought, that we would get revenue.
You got to come to the informational meetings.
Right, but no one even asked at the informational meeting about that.
Now, is there going to be, say, a boilerplate document that we could get from the state eventually?
Yeah, oh, to, right, for regulations.
For regulations.
Yeah, the way I understand it is there's, the state has created a cannabis control board and they're the regulators and they will send out recommendations. But what I heard from Healthy La Mola is that the towns also have to you know, adopt those regulations.
Correct.
Yeah. And this is everything from, you know, how far from the school to this and the other thing.
Playground, schools.
And does that affect zoning, changes to zoning?
Yes.
Because if it's changes to zoning, our zoning has to be voted on by Australian ballot.
Yeah. Yeah, and it would, it would change.
So that, you know, possibly could be in November.
Yeah. There's always the possibility that nobody, nobody's going to want to open a shop.
Well, someone's already come in last week and asked Tom about getting a permit. And he said, well, we haven't, we haven't even voted on it. Well, he would need a zoning permit. He wanted a zoning permit.
Yeah. Well, if he's going to open a shop, he needs a zoning permit. And he's got to get a permit from the state.
But I'm just saying that I wouldn't assume that no one's not interested.
Well, if you look, if you look at the cost that the state is saying just to be a person selling, if you put that upfront and there's still no guarantee you can do it. But last I heard, it was probably $5,000 to $10,000 upfront.
Oh, they'll make it.
Oh, do you mean to run a successful business? Yeah.
No, no, just to apply. And then the state will have to approve you.
Yeah.
Isn't it a guarantee that you're going to be selling in this town?
Right, right, right.
And then the whole issue with banks.
It's, it's really, it's messy. It's a messy one. And that's why I didn't like it.
Sounds like it's going to be a serious, morbid back pain on this issue.
It is, but I just don't think we should ignore it and think it will go away.
No.
That's all.
No, right.
Any other comments anyone wants to make on ballot issues?
Our budget passed pretty good, 171, 77.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that at the next meeting that we can, Belinda, that you can have for us. We know what money we put away for the fund balance and then what the leftover from last year is so we can decide how we want to do it. Tonight I started putting together a spreadsheet. Maxfield English mentioned, you know, do we have any kind of idea of the monies in there? And I thought it was a good suggestion. So I've started trying to pull together the Brook Road and School Street Bridge and so forth, what those costs are, when the money would be needed. The Brook Road culvert, they can invoice us monthly. There will be some costs we have to absorb for moving the utilities. That's not part of the contract. And there's also the cost of having to play loan coding to take that bridge out, even though we'll get reimbursed for it. Most likely, we would have to pay them. I think it was 20,000. So I'm trying to think of everything and put it in this spreadsheet so the board can I think it was twenty thousand. So I'm trying to think of everything and put it in this spreadsheet so the board can. Be able to look at it. Uh, and that email for this. School Street Bridge, it said, at a certain point, they're gonna start billing us in increments of the, the work being done. They couldn't tell me anything more than that, or when that would start, or what it meant. But just to be aware that. They're not gonna build the bridge and then just ask for our share.
So we're gonna have to put the whole bill and then.
I know, I think it's our share.
Just our share, okay.
You might have to, you gotta have, you're gonna have to bond with maybe.
I don't think we need a bond. I don't think we'll, the, the state will be footing the bill. Not like FEMA where you have, we have to pay and then get invoiced, I believe that. The state will pay for it and then they will just bill us for our portions, but I will check on that.
So for town meeting next year, if, you know, if the schedule is two thousand and twenty-five, but you could. Put on a loan up to a certain, if you decided to go up to a certain number of years. Because at the moment, we only, we only, uh. Do it per year for a line of credit, but then we have other loans for longer.
So what we, yeah, what we're trying to get away from is the loans and the burden on. Taxpayer, so it's steady, but it's not gonna work in the beginning. And we're really gonna have to put some money into it next year, I think, to try to.
I'm thinking the bridge would probably be a lot of money for there.
Yeah, bridges, um. I can't, I think our share is three hundred thousand.
That's still a lot. How much will be, how much was the FEMA money that was in there exactly? I don't think it was that much.
There were FEMA money there.
Oh, you're talking about the Brook Road?
Yeah.
That we have to all pay for and then get reimbursed. The bid was four hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, the whole project is close to eight hundred thousand. But we've done, um, some work, not much. But there's some things outside of that, that, um. That total amount that we're gonna have to pay. Like moving the utilities. Anyway.
That could be expensive.
So the total, I think you guys got it, but we had two hundred and fifty-one people. Between absentee ballots and people coming. Hundred and thirty-four were, um, absentee and then the rest were in person. So I had more absentee than I had in person.
I think it's really, uh, poor showing though, seeing as we have twelve hundred on the.
I know.
Voter checklist. Okay. Do we have anything else, or should we just have a quick executive session?
Mask mandate. Are we going to do that one next week? Next week or this?
We have a schedule for next week. I mean, I don't know what you're showing there.
Was it, uh, was it the town report, uh? Report about the, uh, setting up a. Board of directors for the town forest? Was that where it's on?
Well, I put an ad in the paper and the deadline is next meeting. We've had a couple people apply.
Yeah, how do you feel?
I'm wearing a mask. I, you know, I don't know, you know. You all can do what you want to do, but I'm wearing a mask.
The reason I ask is I. Want to make sure some of these on the board that's gonna look out for everyone to use at the forest. I want it to be available for hunters. As well as. More peaceful.
So, yeah, we have, and that's what they will do. Ultimately, we have, ultimately, we have to make the decision. But it's the case that we need to set up this forest and they need to design. Um, uses and so forth for it and, uh, set up the charter. It's, take about a year. Reach out to the community and see what people want. Then, because we don't have a conservation commission, that, uh, those that might want to stay on and manage it could. It seems like there's quite a few people, um, that are very interested in the trails committee rather than the forest committee. She said we shouldn't set that up right yet, waiting to hear from that grant. But if, she said we also could have some of those trails people manage it too. It might be different aspects of managing it. I wanted to make sure that, um. There were some aspects for people with disabilities to be able to use it too.
Yeah.
So, so that encompasses, um, everything, you know. Do, you know, and the question is, do you just want hunting on one side, not on the school side where. They have classes. There's a lot of things for them to talk about.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure. It's, it's accessible to. Most people within reason. I mean, I, I would. You know, if we find that there's a deer yard. You know, certain location, I wouldn't want snowmobiles or ATVs getting into that area. Which will make it easier for predators to get in on the back trails from those vehicles. But I want it to be available for.
Fish and game and toast.
With that, fish and game and toast in the deer yards.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, those, um, applications or letters of interest to do it our next meeting. We have a big meeting next time.
Last thing, I will say, I only have one person who walked in without a mask into this section and, um. I asked him if he went on a mask and he didn't. It was fine. So I only had one non-compliant person come in. Edie did, um, try to.
Just had three people that I saw without masks.
Right, and then he put them on and caved in.
Yeah.
I think it's a town policy for reasonable. And we need to enforce it, at least for now, till things ease up. I wear this thing because I've got COPD, but it protects you from me, doesn't protect me from you. But it's compromised, I have to work with it. And I was glad to see that there was no conflicts over that coming into voter. And the signs were clear on the door. No mask, go away. I love that.
I think actually the election day was done very well. There is no intake violation. Other than the cap.
No, we won't make the cap work.
Yeah.
We'll see along with CDC J is invited on it. Don't you guys, they started backtracking on that, right?
So do you want to have a motion to go into executive session?
Only a motion that we're going to accept the session.
I'll second.